Commissioner Patterson, would you please send an invitation, sir?
As everyone please stand. My mic's working tonight, yeah, I guess. Tonight, we're gonna have our opening prayer with Mr. Eric Youngblood. And Eric is the Director of Economic Development. He does a fine job, we appreciate him. And Eric, if you'll lead us in our prayer tonight.
Excellent, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Good evening, Fathers, we come to you tonight. We come to you with Thanksgiving. We come to you with humble hearts. We thank you for the blessings that you give each of us, Lord. The things you give us each day, we need to realize, are from you. I ask tonight that the work we done by this county's commission reflect what you would want to have happen. Lord, we thank you for the blessings of your Son, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins. Lord, take this meeting and help us do your will in your name and prayer.
Amen.
Okay.
We have two men who pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Number two, under unfinished business, we have the approval of the minutes of the April 23rd, 24 regular scheduled board meeting. Commissioner Cersey, any errors or omissions in those minutes?
There's one, sir.
Commissioner Patterson?
I have none, Chairman.
All right, well, even though I didn't make it, sir.
We're good.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes and ask for a second.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number three, under unfinished business, we have a board discussion action resolution for animal control fees. Gentlemen, as you know, we approved this, voted to approve a resolution last meeting that we were here. And tonight, we'll just be deciding on that resolution. You don't have any discussion before?
I have none.
Okay. All right, so I'm just gonna sign this one and pass it on over, and then we'll go to the next one. And then the next one. Number three would be the resolution for the employee retirement insurance coverage. Any questions or anything on that?
No.
I have none, Chairman.
All right. All right, so under new business, first one is number five, we have board discussion action. This is a variance request from Bram and Dana Wysocki. And I apologize if I said that wrong.
You did that correctly.
To build a home that was, I think it actually burned maybe last year.
It did, July last year.
I hate that, for sure. I think you originally asked for three feet, but that was changed to eight feet from the property line and also requested road setback to ten feet. So, gentlemen, I think the original request was three feet. After talking with Mr. Nicholson back there, he, we thought eight foot would probably be the best. And even, if I'm not mistaken, this is eight feet from an easement.
Correct.
To, like a lake, right? So, like a fifteen-foot easement goes down through there. So, it's not actually eight feet from the next house, per se. Okay. All right, and then the road setback is actually, it's already there. It's kind of what was from the last, that was changed.
What I looked at today with the superintendent of the project, the house would basically go back where it was before it had burned.
Okay. All right, all right, so.
Basically.
Anything, Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're gonna pinpoint it, but.
Okay. Anything, you, Commissioner? All right. Is anybody here to oppose this variance request by chance? All right, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve this variance request and ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is this gonna be a permanent residence or?
Uh, no, secondary.
Secondary.
I much appreciate it, Lord.
One day perhaps.
Oh, yeah. What was that?
One day, hopefully permanent.
Good.
All right, number seven, we have board discussion action regarding Fannie County Library request for proposal of construction management at risk services. Gentlemen, I think we're, what we're trying to do is put this out for bid for a construction manager at risk. And I feel that, you know, if we, if we vote to approve this tonight, we'd be subject to final approval of the architect before we put that out. So, we still, still waiting on an architect to get us some rendering, what they come up with. And then, we would be voting to go ahead, once we get that rendering at our next meeting, we can go ahead and put it out for, for bid for a construction manager at risk, so.
It's just another step.
It's just another step that we're trying to take to get her done, so.
Okay.
Mr. Cersey, anything on that?
Sounds good.
We don't have any representatives here yet. Does that represent?
We don't.
Okay.
We don't want this to, um, any discussion on that?
I have none, Chairman.
That being said, I'll make that motion to put out for bid for construction management at risk services, subject to the final approval of an architect. I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My man. Board discussion action, number six, we'll jump back on, representative from MSI on insurance benefits. So, yes, ma'am, come on. I was excited about the library to move forward. We've been waiting on this for years.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah.
I'm Zorin, Zorin Warrow, and I work for MSI, Fannie Fest Club, and I work for John Laye. And I used to work with Matt Bigelow. I believe you remember about Matt Bigelow as well. And overall, I do have good news. So, if you look at page two of the presentation, it's just a short recap of the renewal last year. It was very busy renewal. United Healthcare gave us a five percent reduction in premium, which was about, coming from forty-seven thousand dollars reduction. We renewed with no change in benefits in plans or in, no change in deductions. On the employee, on the dental side, also the five percent increase in premium, no change in plan side in deductions. Vision, there were no changes, still holding great guarantee, little increase on the basic line and everything else, they can say. This year, on the next page, as you can see, the renewal situation looks a little different. And we're looking at overall twenty-five, twenty-four and a half percent increase, so it's about six hundred, six hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. We get pushed back in United Healthcare, and we went out to market. And we see several options, very competitive options. And we also used them as a leverage for United Healthcare, asking them to reconsider the overall increase. And unfortunately, we were not successful. United Healthcare will not dodge. And so, now, we're looking at that lot of options on page four. Option two is going with Anthem with very similar plan designs, also with two plans, with the high deductible plan and a traditional plan. And as you can see, there's a slight improvement on the high deductible plan. This option is gonna be about close to eight percent increase, or we're looking at about two hundred and eight thousand dollars difference, overall difference.
Two thousand and eight?
Two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight.
Okay.
Three seventy-four, right. They also gave us thirty thousand dollars of traditional credit, which is going to be applied on our first invoice. The second option that would end them, although the option three would be going with the single plan option, which in this, in the county situation, it does make sense, because we've noticed that there are twenty-two employees that changed from last year from the high deductible plan to a traditional plan, meaning that there is people starting to pull away from the high deductible plan. Excuse me, it's mainly because of the plan design, because specialists are subject to deductible, it's extremely expensive. And people do prefer traditional plan. Anthem, under this option, since it's a lot more cost effective to build and implement one medical plan instead of two, they were able to increase the traditional credit to seventy-five thousand dollars. And there was a slight, slight improvement on the prescription portion of the plan. And the overall increase is about eight percent, or about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
So, when John was here with MSI, he talked about going to the single plan. So, if we went to the single plan instead of having two different plans, on that traditional plan for a family coverage, it was eighty-seven dollars for a coverage for a family, it would be going down to forty dollars and three cents for a family coverage.
Is that with Anthem?
Yes, with Anthem, yes.
That's the Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Yeah.
That's just one person, though?
No, that's the family coverage.
That's the family?
Yes, so, we would keep the forty dollars and three cents for a family coverage, what used to be on the high deductible. So, on the high deductible, we had a thirty-five hundred dollar deductible. So, going to Anthem and going to the single plan, it would be able to drop our deductible to two thousand dollars for that. So, that's another good point on that, just that single plan. So, it would drop our coverage price to just a single employee, no cost at all for them. It would be for an employee plus one dependent, twenty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. And then, an employee in family coverage, that forty dollars and three cents.
With a two thousand dollar deductible?
With a two thousand dollar deductible for everybody. And then, a, it would be going to like a specialist. So, she talked about, a lot of people did not want to go to that traditional plan because of the co-pay for a specialist. So, it would be a thirty-five dollar co-pay for all the employees to go to a specialist, even if they had to go to a cardiologist, instead of having to meet the deductible, then pay a seventy-five dollar co-pay also. So, that's better, a better plan for what used to be our higher deductible plan through United Healthcare.
And I may say, if we go with this single option, so, we're looking at, as I said, two hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase, which if you look at, compared to the United Healthcare renewal offer, it's about four hundred and forty thousand dollars difference, which I think is pretty significant. And if you minus the transitional credit, if we apply that, so the overall increase to the county is going to be a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for the next plan year.
So, with, so we'll have our prescription, eye, dental, and health, all in this plan?
This is just a medical plan, but we also do have the dental and division options for, for the dental and them as well. This option is only for the medical.
Okay, so, what is, okay.
Do you have anything about dental? Okay, just as a package dental?
So, yeah, if you'll flip over a couple pages, I think it's on page eight, the dental. So, the dental actually goes down almost half a percent. So, the cost would go down for the county. And on the vision, the cost would go down also. It was almost, it's ten and nine percent. So, the cost is down for, say, a family coverage, from, it was four dollars and sixty cents a week, going to four dollars and sixteen cents a week on the Anthem.
So, basically, it's less than forty-five dollars for the family coverage you can get.
Yeah, and then the.
We're paying like eighty-seven, eighty-eight bucks now.
Right, yeah. And then, the dental is seven dollars and fifty cents.
So, less than fifty bucks.
Yeah.
And keep in mind, also note, into the, the medical rates, Anthem's medical rates include two percent deduction, I mean, it degrades bundling discount for selling along with the dental and divisions. And on the last page of the presentation is the total renewal summary. And as you can see, we have the United Healthcare renewal option, Anthem, two options, dual and single option, and the single, the single option. I did mention, didn't mention exactly the single option, but it's, all of it is competitive compared to the United Healthcare renewal. It's by far, not as competitive as its Anthem's option. And their transitional credit is only thirty thousand dollars. Looking at the renewal summary at the end of the presentation, Anthem, we strongly recommend Anthem, one of the single option. Better plan design and better deductions for employees. And also, the other item that is on the agenda as well, it is back on page seven, it's deciding on the retiree that is whether or not the county would offer retiree coverage for, retiree only, without dependents. And individuals with at least thirteen years of service with the county can minimum age sixty-two. And continue on the county plan, active plan, up until medicare eligibility. We already ran out through Anthem, there will be no costing back to the rates. So, they agree with that, on the rates, it's covered.
Some other questions, you know, when we switch over from the last insurance to United Healthcare, some.
We talked about the deductible.
For the dental, it's also meds.
Yes.
You know, and everybody is fine, in that sense.
Yeah.
There'll be needs to transition in that sense.
Yeah, so they would send, yeah, the healthcare would send, say, Anthem, a file over of what everybody's deductibles would be. And then Anthem would honor that. So, we would not start all over, new deductibles, by changing them in the middle of the year, so that's good.
When would this take, bud?
We go from January first to January. So, we have open enrollment first week of June, and then, January first would be the new coverage.
Okay.
About July, I'm guessing, sorry, I said January fourth. I knew that all the time. That confuses me. Yeah, the deductible starts over in January, and coverage is July, yeah.
And in the meantime, while we are going through the transition, if anybody's having some kind of urgent medical procedure or they need their deductible updated with Anthem urgent, then we can do that on individual basis as well. All we need is an explanation of benefits in United Healthcare, and I can get somebody, our account representative of Anthem, to update it on individual basis, if it's needed, so.
Thank you.
So, we need to know, when is the, so, we need to know how, how this can feel, when we do.
I think we need to make a pretty good decision.
Pretty good decision.
Yeah, 'cause we have open enrollment first week of June, yeah. And then, if we're changing companies, it's a lot to get done.
It's not the matter, yes, we're very confident that Anthem is really efficient that they're implementing new plans, new policies, and new bills, so, but still, will require longer time.
Well, question, oh, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. So, you know, I know we had, you know, United Healthcare, we, we've been pretty good in them for a couple years. Does Anthem have a history of throwing you a bone, so to speak, and then all of a sudden, boom, they go, you know, on their rates sky?
On the renewal?
Yes.
Yes and no, it all depends on the claims, how the claims are like. But, I can honestly say, I've been working with Anthem now eleven years, United Healthcare. Anthem is really good at managing their renewals. I'm very confident to say that, they're really good, they're really easy and good at working with us, you know, protecting the relationship we have. And especially, if we have enough sufficient information regarding of clients that are driving the high renewal, high cost payments or anything like that, they're definitely in the way, they just really work with us, so.
All right, gentlemen, any discussion on this?
I have none. Well, Anthem's a good, good deal for us.
I think it's better for the employees.
Yeah, I think it.
Just want to put money back in their pocket, I guess.
It's definitely the best deal that we've been presented with, for sure.
Yes.
All right. Well, that being said, gentlemen, I'll, I'll make a motion to go with Anthem and ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Single plan option, aye.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. All right, let me make sure I get something else. Number eight, board discussion action, we have Fannie County Environmental Health County Manager Shannon Brager regarding the purchase of a vehicle.
Good evening, Commissioner Cersey, Chairman Hensley, Commissioner Patterson.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening. Y'all doing well? The reason I came to you this evening is to ask the board commissioners assistance in purchasing a third vehicle for my department. This would actually replace an older vehicle, a two thousand and five Ford Ranger that we have. And it's, it's starting to get, at the end of its life, as far as being reliable for our purposes. Getting some of these steeper roads and things like that, and also being able to be used to support my employees as they're currently getting trained for their jobs. So, we're looking at, seeking to get something more reliable for them to do that. My financial director for my health district has allotted me forty-six thousand dollars in order to purchase a vehicle. As you can see, I have got a quote from Ronnie Thompson. Mr. Parker down there was able to give me one for right under thirty-nine thousand dollars. So, what I was asking, if the board would consider assisting me as far as with the purchase of it, you would, of course, as previous with other two vehicles, maintain a title, and then we would reimburse you fully for the amount of the vehicle, plus the mileage that you use per, per month.
Can we go out of that American Rescue money?
No, this way, have that with general, have that general.
General.
Well, ours would potentially be a purchase. All right. Do you have any discussion on this?
No, it's native.
Yeah.
You got enough people to drive now, right?
Got enough people to drive.
Oh.
So, yes, that's a blessing out there.
It is, I know you went for a while, just struggling, like everybody, trying to get some help.
Yeah, I told people, if I had hair to pull out, I would have pulled it out, at one point, yeah, yeah.
When did you say you had to deliver it?
Well, I, I can't technically take possession of it until after my new fiscal year, which starts July first.
But they'll be able to deliver it, I mean.
And I've been assured that they're able to deliver a lot more timely than previous of the two.
Yeah, and I know sometimes.
Yeah, the previous two took almost a year before.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I hear you're asking for this thirty-eight, eight fifty?
Mm, okay. And what, as discussed, as soon as the, you know, the board commissioner takes possession of it, they usually send out paperwork and invoice, which I forward to my district, and then they cut a check back to the board commissioners for that amount.
All right, anything further, gentlemen?
No, sir. I have none.
I'll make a motion to purchase this, it looks like it's a Ford Ranger, in the amount of thirty-eight, eight fifty, and I'll ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appreciate you doing that very much.
Thank you.
Good work.
All right. Next on the agenda is number nine, we have the board discussion action on the appointment of Brian Avery, Fannie County Economic Development Authority Board.
Is he here with us?
He is, he's right here.
All right. Are you willing to take the position?
Yes, sir.
Would Toby Allen have all the responsibility?
Yes, sir, he has. They both have.
All right, Chairman, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, so, I think Ms. Self had actually, and some of the board members had some others they've talked to, and I think Mr. Avery is, is the one they settled on. I say that loud, everyone's kidding me. So, after, after talking to Mr. Avery, I think he fits the qualifications for this in my mind. And any discussion on this from you guys?
No, sir.
All right, so I'll make a motion to appoint Brian Avery to the Fannie County Economic Development Authority Board, and I'll ask for a second.
My second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
His, his term will be a three-year term, and it'll lead from today, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, to May fourteenth, twenty twenty-seven. So, that'll be your terms there, so.
We appreciate your service to the county, and we thank you for your service.
All right, so number ten, we have our Fannie County Recreation and Recreation Odeo. We've got some news on the sea pool. There you go, the sea.
Good, there you go.
Good.
Just a quick update on where the pool is at. So, construction wise, there's only two steps left to do, and that will be the low voltage wiring of the meters for the chemical pumps. It's all new, state-of-the-art pool system, so it will meter and electronically keep track of the chemicals that go into the pool. So, that needs to be finished, wiring, which will be complete tomorrow. The engineers will come down Thursday morning and inspect and sign off on everything in the pump house and chemical rooms. So, and then, the only others left, left construction wise, will be the flooring of the spray pad. As you know, we have a life floor, the safety flooring for our spray pad. It's not just concrete, it's safety padding. So, those guys plan to be done by Monday, they need dry weather to do that. So, if the good Lord provides us with weather, construction will be complete on Monday, so.
We hope we're done late.
Our goal is to open on May twenty-seventh, barring any unforeseen, you know, thing, thing to happen. So, we will open May the twenty-seventh. From the management end, we're currently training lifeguards as fast as we can train them. We've been able to do some in Gainesville with Red Cross. I was able to hire a young lady who is actually qualified to train, so she will begin in the morning, training. So she will begin in the morning, training, uh, ten people, and then next week, train the rest. So we're very, very lucky to find and hire her.
How many people do you employ for that?
We will, we will hire around eighteen people, uh, so we can work through summer vacations, you know, these are all high school, college kids that we can, uh, you know, work through their summer vacations, that work detail. So we're hiring a bunch to staff six, uh, seven days a week, so. That, these guys have to be, our pool is not like the other pools there, it has a deep, uh, deep end, an eight-foot sanction. So, uh, they have to be deep water rescue trained. So it, what they have to go through is a little more advanced, it takes three days to, uh, train.
Deep, deep end, you said eight foot?
Yes, yes.
At the deepest it is?
At the deepest end, yeah.
And it's gradual flow?
Yes, it's eight foot, there's actually a slot, and that's another thing, the slide is not here, it's a long lead time out. It won't be here till the first week in June, so what we'll do is we'll shut down one day, have an installation done by the construction crew, and then we'll open back up, so.
How's your flash flood looking, is it looking good?
Yeah, it looks great, you guys will welcome to drive by and, and look at it, everything, if you've been by there, it's, it's really a beautiful pool, yeah.
So the pad, the pool will be open on the twenty-seventh?
That's the plan, yeah. Yeah, we just need to get the floor down on the pad, and it, and it goes down with an epoxy, so obviously it has to be done. They need a couple of days of back-to-back dry weather.
Barn and Travis, do you want to have a grand opening there that day?
Yeah, ribbon cutting?
Ribbon cutting, yeah, absolutely, hopefully before that, yeah. Yeah, we've got a couple of weeks, we've got.
How many, uh, it's some, this is a tough people out here, how many, what's the maximum, uh?
The bathing loan, it's around two hundred and fifty people, but with a spray pad, people kind of patrol their own bathing, it's not like we're gonna open the doors and say, we're only selling two hundred tickets. People, you know, maintain the bathing loan themselves, but it's way more than you would ever have in a pool at one time.
Okay, and tell the people about how much you're gonna charge and those type of things?
Oh, yeah.
The price?
Yeah, you can, uh, a, a daily pass, uh, for, uh, is five bucks, uh, kids under five are free. Individual season passes, sixty-five dollars. Uh, an individual season pass for a non-resident is one twenty-five. Family season passes are a hundred and twenty-five dollars, up to five family members. A non-resident family is two hundred dollars. Um, any people or persons with disabilities, this, the pool is all ADA accessible, it has the beachfront, a zero entry. And we also have, it's equipped with a lift to, uh, assist people in and out of the water.
I had to get, yeah.
And, and pool rentals will be a hundred dollars an hour, two hour max, and then, and then, uh, they will pay the lifeguards, uh, twenty-five dollars an hour. That will be an additional cost, and, and how many lifeguards they need is, depends on how many people they bring. So it's one for every ten, if you got twenty people, you need two lifeguards, they'll have to pay that fee for those.
That pool has lots and all?
It does have lots of people, yes, yes.
Eddie, what's the date that it opens for, just so the people know, as far as the, uh, if you get a, a season pass, do you close, uh, later day, I guess?
Yeah, it'll be around, around that time. Typical what's happening when kids go back to school, you start seeing that crowd diminish, and, and, uh, most pools close, you know, in the surrounding areas around in there.
So what's the days and hours of operation?
Uh, will be noon till six, Monday through Saturday, two to six on Sunday.
Two to six on Sunday?
Correct.
And then, uh, noon till?
Six.
Six on, later day? Monday through Saturday?
That's correct.
Next splash pad too, they're, they're working together?
Yes, so, that, that one, certainly, yeah.
How's the, uh, walking track, the, uh?
We will tackle that next, I'm, I'm trying to eat this elephant one bite at a time. It's taking up a lot of time, and I'd like to give a shout out to my crew of people, uh, being patient, and, and there's a lot goes on in springtime, and then us building this pool, and then adding this, all the love, they have been, they've been great, so. CPOs trained, we, we are, we are ready, so, yeah.
Been a monumental task.
It has.
You guys, all of you have done a great job, I appreciate it.
Appreciate, appreciate you guys for deciding to help the community, it's much needed, yeah.
It was native.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's native, keeps them, giving those kids jobs in the summer, that's good.
We employ a lot of young people with park time jobs, so it's good, good for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Eddie, is, uh, the parking gonna be okay, I know, you know, you got baseball season coming and stuff like that?
Parking will be an issue, yeah, yeah, park, parking will be an issue there, that, that is the one negative part, if you, if you've known the city park, there's not a lot of parking there. Uh, we have added, and I've done some fill at the back of one of the ball fields, and, uh, Zach helped us out, and we will, uh, level that out and re-gravel that, that'll make some additional parking. But it will be a challenge, uh, parking.
Baseball, tournaments on weekends?
Yeah, probably what we'll do with all the summer tournaments coming up
Yeah.
For the big world series tournament, the baseball and softball, we'll stay with most of that Tom Lloyd Park, and probably use max of two fields at the city park, there's just no way to park all those teams in there, and have the pool open.
Eddie, I can't remember that, you don't have grills out there or anything like that, do you?
At that park?
Blue's Park?
No.
This concession stands?
That's correct.
That access road over at Tom Boyd's helped a lot, haven't?
Uh, yes, that, the access road has been a savior, so, uh, everybody loves having another way out of there.
That's good.
For sure, yeah, that, that's big time.
We ought to give a shout out to Zach back there for that, and access road.
Yeah.
All these grills.
Yeah, sweet.
Can you buy the passes online or do you have to go to the company?
No, you can't buy them online as of right now, we are, we have started pre-selling, uh, you can come to the rec center, we're pre-selling, uh, or you can call, and we can do it over the phone. That way, uh, we're trying to alleviate some of the burden of that rush, uh.
You getting a good response?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's so many people by there, the G C.
You'll be covered that before.
Yeah, they, they've been tour guys for a lot of days, but, but the contractor we hired, those guys have been, obviously, good work with it.
They've been good.
They've been on point, it's been on time the whole way.
Well, actually, it's ahead of what you thought.
It is ahead of schedule, so those guys have, have really done a, a good job around, so. Thank you.
We appreciate you, we appreciate you, thank you.
All right, number eleven, we have board discussion action, we have Public Works Director Zach Ratcliffe regarding the purchase of another vehicle.
You got finally.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Uh, I've come to the, tonight, asked for a couple pieces of equipment. Uh, I've got a traffic roller that I'd like to purchase to, uh, been able to repair a chip seal that's been damaged over the winter. Uh, I think it'll make it more efficient by doing this with this machine. With this, it's not, I'm not, I backed up, I said purchase, I'd like to lease it or rent it, uh, for seven months at least, to see how it goes, I can do that. For seven months, and then we can maybe turn it out live at the end of that, so I'd like to rent it for seven months.
How much, Zach?
Four thousand dollars a month.
Four thousand a month?
Yep, and eighty-seven percent of that will go towards the price of the purchase price, so.
That's great.
Yep.
What does it do, Zach?
It's a, it's a roller, it has, uh, I think it's got, uh, five sets of wheels in front, five in the back, and for a steel roller, just to do something like a hard surface, you may skip over a soft spot.
Right.
But these will do, uh, wheels, the rubber tire wheels, but therein, they'll flex over something and, and impact more evenly, and, um, we'll have these loose spots that we're getting, we're having to get to get, so.
Like on Kyle Road, Chase Mountain?
Yeah, I see it.
Leasing.
So, uh, I, I give this a lot of, uh, a lot of time, look through this thing, try to find the best deal for, for the buck, so I think this is it. Uh, we're getting, we've got, we got the small one from the same brand, which is Hamlin, and, uh, that thing is, it's jammed up, so this one out here is, is the same, same deal.
Y'all just having the same problems on Old Isle, going back all the way towards Dallas River Bridge, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's seven degree winter, it took a toll on them.
Sherry, so that one come out of the American Rescue, right?
No, it began as lost.
Lost?
Yeah, it's lost.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll come out as lost.
And so you, you wanna rent it for seven months?
Yeah.
And then eighty percent?
Eighty-seven percent.
Eighty-seven percent will go toward the cost.
Yes.
Okay.
Had to give us seven months to know for sure that that's what we want with that kind of money, and, but, yeah.
So you wanna do it that way?
Yes, sir.
What's the purchase price on the thing?
One thirty-two.
Just a drop in the bucket?
Yeah, nothing's cheap.
No, no.
There again, this gives us opportunity to make sure it's gonna work for us.
Yeah.
Before we do purchase it.
You know, I got a lot of money tied up, anyway, that way you can, you can always bail before it gets, you have a lot of money.
And how much use does you, you get out of this?
When we get this, you could see a lot of use out of this, all these roads that we've got that's been damaged due to the weather, probably out on that one. And those trailers we bought, remember the three trailers we bought?
Yeah. Uh, did you, uh, how much did you say that was a month?
Four thousand a month, it's, it's right here, it said four thousand a month, but that number of purchase price on this page that you got, I believe it's gonna be wrong, if one twenty-three, should be one thirty-two.
One thirty-two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's typed that in wrong, yeah, that's what it is.
It's one thirty-two?
So we're still looking at the four thousand dollars to, to, per month to rent it.
Okay.
Is it easy to maintain that equipment?
Yeah, it's, yeah, anytime you got something new, it makes it easier. Yeah, we, the things we got, we've got one out there, and I have no clue how old it is, it's real life, matter of fact, uh, we turned it over one time, and I took my pickup to it, and pulled it back up, so it's not very heavy. So, you know, this thing, if you turn this one over, you, you've done something, so, twelve thousand, things twelve thousand some odd pounds, it just weighs, so. I'd say the one we got out there might be, might weigh a thousand pounds, or a lot, yes, it's, it's small.
And your trailers, what's the capacity on those new ones?
Sixteen thousand.
Gentlemen, I think it's a, an option we can use, and that way we can see if it will work out for us, and we can check it out for seven months and make a decision at the end of that, but any discussion before we say it on this?
We could, hey?
All right.
I'll make a point, yeah?
Me, too.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we lease this piece of accu, equipment for seven months.
Right.
At four thousand dollars a month, and I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I've got one more, and, uh, uh, I'm a, you know, wait, I'm a recycler, so, uh, we have a, a Chevrolet ambulance, I can't remember the year, I do remember the model, it was like two hundred thousand on it, I think it was. Yeah, four-wheel drive, that thing is, if you looked it over, I think it's just like immaculate condition, so we took the box off of it, and we want, we wanna buy a little dump bed for it. I bought, I picked up a dump bag truck from, uh, Thomas's up there, Pro Formers Truck Bays in Blairfield. And I'd like to duplicate that on this, on this Chevrolet, uh, it's, uh, fifteen thousand, one hundred, fifteen dollars, and that's what turnkey you put it on, what they get it, and it's finished.
What are you gonna use it for?
Uh, anything we can, I mean, it's.
Like spreads out and stuff?
We can, yeah, we can tow with it, we can pull those trailers we're talking about, it's a diesel truck, it's, it's, it's a real truck. So, it didn't cost me anything, so I won't put this money into it and make it, you know, so like I said, it was used ambulance, and we're.
So we like a dump bag, huh?
Yeah. Remember the red international, I'm, it's the same setup.
Now we're chatting real well for something, you got the length of the pile on it, so.
Yeah, everything's ready to go, just hold, he can put it down there, maybe, he said probably a week, if everything went well, he's got it in stock up there, and, uh, so it puts in business pretty quick.
And this come out as lost?
It would also come out as lost, yes.
Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
No, sir, I have none.
All right, I'll make a motion that we purchase, um, that bed, that truck, fifteen thousand, one hundred, fifteen dollars, and I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Thank y'all, I'll give y'all the update, too, my swimming pool's wide open, too.
So we'll be over there soon.
Yeah, you could, you could probably swim in today, well, kind of, just, just where this is going, uh, we started on our gas station out there, it was, uh, this, uh, station out there, and there's a hole out there that the tanks are in, is, uh, thirty by forty by fifteen foot deep. So, you know, all this rain we've had, it's got water in it, but they're keeping it pumped out.
It'll be a little dingy.
Yeah.
How you getting along with that gas pump?
They probably, next week or the next, we'll probably pump a few.
Cool.
Yeah, well, it's looking good, too.
All right.
It's been a mess, but it's looking good.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Coming around, I think, I think it's coming for that. All right, so number twelve, uh, board discussion action, this is a proposal for a well installation, minor modification at the closed Fannie County, uh, SR five landfill, number two. And, um, gentlemen, what this is, is, um, uh, EPD has come in and says that, uh, you know, we're about a landfill that they're, they're requesting that we, uh, drill another well. And I'll just read kind of what it is, Fannie County landfill has been closed since ninety-five, ninety-six, decided to schedule to be monitored for thirty years. Uh, Randy Muslow is the contractor for the monitoring, and he's also, uh, he also has Brent Cortolone in Atlanta, who physically comes to the closed landfill to conduct the monitoring. The les, the levels of cobalt and G W C T N A have been statistically high, levels above the groundwater protection standards. Um, this, per the rules of solid waste management, proposal for the installation of the new monitored well is attached on here, as you guys will read. Um, so, so basically, you know, we had this, this one well that's been monitored forever, and they're asking us to put another one, um, over by it, to make sure that it's not leaching out any further. Um, so that's, that's their request, uh, for that, uh, well, and I want to thank the price, um, the price on that is eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. Um, and I wish Miss Woody was here, because I think she said there was some reimbursements on that as well, that we would be getting back.
Are we gonna do this, uh, timeline quickly?
Yeah.
It's not really a request, it's a do it.
It's required.
It's a do it.
Never ends.
We're trying to be nice.
I'm gonna tell you and ask you to do it.
Yeah. And, and we have, we closed ours, just basically in the nick of time, they said here if you do it by this time, you only have to do, and our tests have always come back good, and we've just been very blessed.
I can get one of these, what he's on, but, uh, like I say, I know there was some kind of reimbursement scheduled, just, uh, what they do, that's something, uh, that was attached to this. Let's suggest that we need to, uh, make a, on the way, eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars, um, to make sure that that cobalt is not seeping out any farther.
Yeah, we gotta do it.
We gotta do it.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, is there a, is there a specific location that they described in there?
There is.
Any depth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, every, everything is in here, uh, they've even marked it, um, the location where to do that, yeah. Yeah, they.
Chairman, what's the depth?
Deep enough to monitor the water.
Which is what? For eleven thousand dollars, how much is what?
That's what, we're trying to find the breakdown of it.
Fail four, five hundred feet. Eight, probably more than that.
It's thirty-five, it says driller one thirty-five, say shallow bail, for six thousand, three twenty-five, or something like that, right there.
It says it should be noted that the cost of being included to drill through ten foot of bedrock.
At a hundred and thirty-five feet for eleven K.
Into monitoring, I think.
Into monitoring as well. And there again, uh, Miss Woody had mentioned something about reimbursement as well. So I just need to find out exactly the amount, um, that was to be reimbursed, because she, we didn't put this on here.
But you don't have a choice.
Not really, it's a landfill.
Well, they have to monitor the wells, or monitor the water, and, um, make sure that it's not leaking out into any other areas around.
They do another one after this?
We hope not.
Further out? They can build on that well?
Our hope is not to have to. So, but if they tell us that we have to, then, yeah, we'll probably end up doing it then. General, any, any discussion on this?
I don't, no, sir, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we drill this well. It's been required by the E P D, and I'll ask for a second.
I say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to public commentary, if anybody has anything, want to say or ask, or whatever, just raise your hand, come on up, and we'll go from there. Anybody? All right, we'll close the public commentary. General, that brings us to executive session, um, I do have a need for executive, executive session this evening, unfortunately.
Hurt your living.
I will make a motion that we go into executive session, ask for a second.
I do, so I act like that is a yes.
All in favor? Executive session?
I say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. While in executive session, we discuss real estate matters, uh, no decision was made, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I might get a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.